Good evening and welcome to the Foxborough Zoning Board of Appeals August 25, 2022 meeting. We have a few minutes of administrative matters. First is the minutes from our last meeting. I had a couple of comments that I provided to Diana, which she made, relatively minor comments. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
No.
So Kurt, why don't you make a motion to approve them then?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted from last meeting.
Oh, that's corrected.
That's corrected.
Okay. Second?
We can't hear.
Kim, we couldn't hear you?
You can, can you hear me now?
Yes, you seconded it?
Second.
Okay, so I have to do a roll call.
Roll call.
So Kim, Kim Melvin?
Yes.
Kurt Yegian?
Yes.
Lorraine Brew?
Yes.
And Barney Overit, yes, so they are approved. Does anybody have any other administrative issues, matters to discuss? Okay, so the, the first hearing will be at 7:05. We do have two applications to consider before we get to the Moore Street, the continuation of the Moore Street matter. So those who are here for the Moore Street matter, if you want to spend your time in here, you're more than welcome. If you want to spend your time outside, it's a relatively nice evening, you're welcome to do that as well. We'll probably take a break for about five or seven minutes after the two applications, so if you're outside, we'll certainly let you know. You can come on, come on back in.
Thank you.
And I'll go up on my watch, which is running fast, so.
I got 7:02.
Location, Monopol, and associated equipment and facilities, and two variances under section 10.2.2.3 from the dimensional requirements of sections 7.2.4.1 and 7.2.4.8. Properties located on Washington Street in the S1 Special Use District, as referenced by the Foxborough Assessors Office as map 004, parcel 009. It is not in any restrictive overlay district. Mr. Parry or Parry?
Parry, yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Let me just explain, we ordinarily are a board of five, one of the members is not here. Kurt's an associate member, I'm a regular member, Kim is a regular member, and Lorraine is an associate member. Only three of us vote, and it'll be Kim, Kurt, and me, okay?
Terrific, just to introduce myself, my name is Edward Parry, P-A-R-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Crown Castle, and I don't have any vacation plans or recent visits abroad. I am here this eve-
Business must be good that way.
Business is busy. I'm here this evening, we had planned to present our application for a tower, as the chair read. At this point, I've talked to the client about 30 minutes ago, we've decided to withdraw our application. Would seek the withdrawal, obviously without prejudice, if the board were so inclined, but at this point, we're not looking to proceed with the project.
You think you might proceed at some later date, or?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
So I thought it'd just be best to withdraw if we could do it without prejudice, but I don't think it's going to proceed at all.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
Kim, Lorraine, any questions? So what does someone give us a motion to authorize a withdrawal without prejudice?
Motion to authorize withdrawal without prejudice.
Kim, second?
Second.
Uh, Kim?
Second.
On the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Kurt?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Thank you very much, enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, do you want to call Pat, since we're running ahead?
I'm going to text Paige and see if she can call Pat.
Okay.
I'm in the hot seat.
Would she have to get a hold of him, or?
What's that?
Would she have to get a?
She hasn't responded to me yet.
Ah, there he is, okay.
I got 7:10, so whenever you're ready.
You got 7:10? All right. You're the boss. Time being 7:10 PM, we have an appeal by attorney Francis Blaine pursuant to section 10.2.10.2.2.1 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, chapter 275 zoning of a zoning enforcement decision, I'll wear my glasses to clear up, of a zoning enforcement decision dated July 14, 2022, from the Town of Foxborough Building Commissioner/ Zoning Enforcement Officer stating that a proposed childcare center to be, apologize, to be located at, to be located on a vacant lot at 25 Chestnut Street in the R15 Development District, Residential District, and the Chestnut Payson Overlay District requires site plan review and site plan approval by the Foxborough Planning Board. Before I begin, I don't know if anybody's here who is interested in this, but just let me say, this is an appeal, as the hearing notice, which I labored through, indicates, of a decision by the Town Building Commissioner/ Zoning Enforcement Officer. We do not have, nor do we need, in order to consider this matter, any plans for the proposed childcare center. That is irrelevant for what we're to discuss tonight. If we uphold the appeal and the proposal goes forward, then site, then building plans will be submitted to the Building Commissioner. If we deny the appeal and require site plan approval by the Planning Board, then plans will be submitted to the, to the Planning Board. But there are no plans before us, to my knowledge, there are no plans at all at Town Hall, and again, we do not need any plans in order to consider this particular matter. With that, Frank?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Francis J. Spillane, the applicant. The property owner is King Foxborough LLC. Again, the property location is 25 Chestnut Street, in the R15 zoning district, in the Chestnut Payson Overlay District. Again, this application administration appeal under section 10.2.2, chapter 275 zoning of the Code of the Town of Foxborough. Again, appealing the decision of the Foxborough Building Commissioner that a proposed childcare center to be located on the vacant land located at 25 Chestnut Street, requires site plan review and site plan approval from the Foxborough Planning Board, and that requirement is in violation of the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, which is the Dover Amendment. As a little background, on July 7, 2022, I met in Town Hall with the Foxborough Director of Land Use and Economic Development, Paige Duncan, and the Foxborough Building Commissioner, Scott Shippey, to discuss the proposed childcare center. At that meeting, I presented a draft letter explaining my position that the childcare facility is a protected use under chapter 40A, section 3, and that site plan review and approval by the Foxborough Planning Board could not be required as a condition to the issuance of a building permit. I provided them with copies of the Foxborough Board of Appeals case number 01-23, which I'll get into in a moment, my brief with regard to that case, and a legal opinion from Town Council, Rachel Gellman, dated June 20, 2001. I requested that they call me after reviewing the material, discuss further. They indicated they would review the material and also be contacting Town Council. On July 14, 2022, I received a letter via email dated July 14, from the Foxborough Building Commissioner's zoning officer, Scott Shippey, determining that, quote, "The proposed childcare center is an educational use and is an allowed use in accordance with table 3-1 E9." The argument that a SPR, Site Plan Review, is not required due to the fact the educational use is protected under the Dover Amendment, no longer holds true given a 2010 land court decision and 2014 appeal court affirmation. Case law has determined SPR, again, Site Plan Review, is not an unreasonable regulation. Therefore, it is my opinion and determination that the proposed childcare center requires site plan review in accordance with section 275, it actually should be chapter 275, section 10531, which is site plan requirement with the Planning Board. A copy of the email, a copy of an email dated July 8, 2022, from Town Council Attorney Costello was also attached to that letter. I filed this appeal, appealing that determination on July 22. Initially, I'd like to make a few clarification items. Childcare center is an allowed use within all zoning districts under table 3-1 E9. Educational use is not exempt, is an allowed use by special permit only in certain zoning districts. So the proposed childcare facility is an allowed use under childcare center, not educational. The second, the childcare facility is a protected use under the Dover Amendment, which again is Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, under paragraph 3, which has to do with childcare. Certain educational uses are protected under paragraph 2 under that chapter. Again, this proposed childcare facility is protected under the Dover Amendment as a childcare facility under paragraph 3, and is not an educational use under paragraph 2. So going forward as a childcare facility, not an educational use, has been stated in that letter. The Foxborough, the Foxborough Board of Appeals decided this exact issue in case number 01-23, which was provided to the Director and the Building Commissioner, which was an appeal of the Foxborough Building Commissioner's denial of a building permit application for a childcare facility because site plan approval by the Planning Board was required by the Building Commissioner. Again, case number 01-23 is the exact same issue as this appeal. In that case, the board voted unanimously, 3 to 0, to uphold the appeal, and it determined that the Building Commissioner was not authorized to conditioning a building permit for childcare use on site plan approval. And if I may, I'd like to read some of the excerpts from that case, again, case 01-23. On page 2, paragraph 2, it says, "Childcare facilities and similar uses are permitted as primary and accessory uses in each of the Foxborough zoning districts." This is permitted on the third paragraph, again, of General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3. The next paragraph, "Consistent with chapter 40A 3 prohibitions, the bylaws do not require that a special permit be obtained as a condition to operating a childcare facility within the Town of Foxborough. The bylaws similarly do not require site plan approval, as a prerequisite, to issuance of a building permit for a childcare facility, nor do they in any manner address this issue in connection with any such use." And on page 6, the board says that, "It's the board's opinion that site plan review pursuant to the section 9.01 of the bylaws are not permissible." That's the old site plan review. There are no state, there are no statute or provisions within the bylaws that expressly provides for a public hearing concerning a building permit for a childcare facility short of an appropriate appeal to the board," meaning the issuance of a building permit to the applicant, and then that would be appealed to this board. Again, the board, on page 7, the board voted unanimously, 3 0, to uphold the appeal on the ground that the Building Commissioner is not authorized to condition a building permit for a childcare use on site plan approval that is granted pursuant to provisions of section 9.01 of the bylaws. The board's decision in this respect was based on the following, and to summarize, though chapter 40A 3 does not expressly prohibit a site plan review procedure such as that set forth in section 9.01 of the bylaws, the reported judicial decisions that have in any manner discussed this issue in connection with childcare uses, in cite 3, clearly hold that a procedure of this nature is not permitted by the statute. Later on, it says, "These decisions clearly serve to demonstrate that subjecting a proposed childcare facility to a municipal's site plan review procedure violates chapter 40A 3. In this respect, requiring the petitioner to submit to site plan review in accordance with the provisions of section 9.01 of the bylaws and to obtain site plan approval from the Planning Board is a condition to obtaining a building permit likewise is in violation of such statute." Continues later on. Whereas here, the Building Commissioner firmly required site plan approval as a condition to the issuance of a building permit for proposed childcare use, this ultimately may result in the bylaws being used to prohibit the land use, the use of land or structures for the purposes of operating a childcare facility. Because chapter 40A 3 explicitly states that zoning warrants or bylaws shall not prohibit the land of you, the use of land or structures for this purpose, we believe that requiring site plan approval for a childcare use violates the express prohibition of the statute. And the decision concludes that the Building Commissioner may not, for the reasons stated above, require that this or any other proposed childcare use be required to undergo site plan review in a tying, site plan approval as a conditions to the issuance of a building permit. So in that decision, the board made explicitly clear that it could not be a requirement of the Building Commissioner for site plan approval in order to issue a building permit for a childcare facility. Also at that time, Foxborough Town Council, Rachel Gellman, in his letter dated June 20, 2001, to the Foxborough Commissioner, which again was provided to the Director and the Building Commissioner, stated that a town may not issue site plan review under a zoning bylaw upon a proposed childcare use or structure. On the address, the letter that I received from the Building Commissioner and the email from Town Council, that relies on determining that site plan approval from the Planning Board may be a requirement for a building permit to a childcare. In the email to the Director and the Building Commissioner from Town Council, all cases that are cited by him, except for one, are all dated prior to the 2001 case by this board. So all those cases are well known by this board. Again, in that case, decided that site plan approval could not be a condition to the building permit. The one case cited by Town Council was a land court case, Jewish Cemetery Association of Mass Inc. versus the Board of Appeals of Wayland, which is not a childcare facility case, but concerns a religious purpose, a cemetery. The land court, in that case, decided that a cemetery is a religious purpose under the Dover Amendment. They also decided that a special permit would be required under the earth movement by law, and it also stated that uses protected by the Dover Amendment may be subject to site plan review limited to reasonable regulations. However, the appeals court entered a new judgment nullifying the land court's decision. And it went on, a nulling decision of the Wayland Board of Appeals, and declared that the cemetery was a religious purpose under the Dover Amendment and is exempt from the earth movement provisions of the bylaws, so that no special permit is required. In regard to the site plan review, the appeal court stated that the site plan review issue was moot due to the fact that the site review portion of the town's bylaw had been amended, so that uses protected by the Dover Amendment are required only to undergo a site plan review before the Building Commissioner. So the Way, Town of Wayland, while this was all amended their bylaw, so that site plan review for all uses under Dover Amendment would only be before the Building Commissioner and limited to the application of reasonable regulations. The appeal court stated that, and I'm quoting, "The amended bylaw is consistent with the reasonable reading of the Dover Amendment," again, General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3, in the Bible Speak versus Board of Appeals of Lennox case. In his email to, so again, the appeals court came up with his own decision, said that the site plan was a moot court issue because of the change in the bylaw, but they said that the amended bylaw is consistent with the reasonable reading of Dover Amendment, meaning the Building Commissioner reviews all Dover Amendment uses. And his email, he removes the amended by, the amended bylaw is from the quoted passage-
Frank, when you're saying he, you're talking about Mr. Costello.
Mr. Costello's email now.
Yep.
He removed the wording, "The amended bylaw is," from the quoted passage, in his email to determine that site plan review and approval from the Planning Board could be required for, for a protected use under the Dover Amendment, which is not what the appeal court stated in that sentence or decision. So again, in his email, he states, "The appeal court in 2014 upheld by summary decision," again, it was not upheld, "a site plan review requirement for Dover Amendment uses, which is limited to the applicable reasonable regulation set forth in General Law 40A 3 as," and then his quote starts, "consistent with the reasonable reading of the Dover Amendment and Bible Speak." Again, it was not upheld, and they said that the reasonable reading of that bylaw is what is under the Dover Amendment, consistent with the reasonable reading of the Dover Amendment, which is again, the Building Commissioner reviews all site plan reviews for Dover uses. Again, the appeal court therefore did not uphold the land court, as stated by Town Council, but entered a new judgment, which reversed the land court, and came up with his own decision regarding the special permit for earth removal, and stated that the use protected by the Dover Amendment can only undergo site plan review before the Building Commissioner and limited to the application of reasonable regulations as set forth in Mass General Law 40A, Section 3. Additionally, Town Council stated in his email that, quote, "Massachusetts courts have not determined that site plan review generally violates that Dover Amendment," which is incorrect. Your own decision back in 2001 listed those cases cited in 2001, which include Cartwright, Bible Speak, trustees of Tufts College, Shapiro, and others. Additionally, I sent a letter to the Director and the Building Commissioner on August 11, outlining some of the other projects that have gone on in town, either building or improvements, which, from my understanding, did not require site plan approval from the Building Commissioner. I'd like to give the board a copy of that at this time. It wasn't until today that I got a response back. What I did is I asked them for copies of the site plan approval obtained from the Foxborough Planning Board for these things, or determination that, you know, none was done. They really couldn't do that for me, so they, they sent me everything that they could find in there, and in here, I'll give you three, I'll give you copies of documents in here that state that, on different projects, that the Building Commissioner was just doing administration review, that site plan was not being required. And also, some letters that I got from Kennedy Donovan Center, which involved their original building, the first building there, and their reconstruction. Neither time were they required to go in front of the Foxborough Plan Board for site plan review. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to-
Mm-hmm.
This is my letter with the list of the ones that we found confident, where I'm sure there were other stuff. And then this is copies of what they gave me, not all of them, because some of them were just not relevant. These were the information in there, that site plan review was not required. Now, this is just letters that I got from Kennedy Donovan file that I looked at. There's no site plan approval there. Again, just showing that site plan approval was not required.
Frank, you want to just summarize these, particularly because, actually, I should have said this before, but Lorraine and Kim and I are going to be voting on this-
Okay.
Since they came in, in late. Can you summarize these, so at least they can hear?
Yeah. So in my letter to the Director and the Building Commissioner, I listed seven either buildings or improvements. The first one is Kennedy Donovan Center, Inc., at 1 Commercial Street, which was built in 1988, and then demoed and rebuilt in 2015. I looked at that file myself, there was no site plan approvals there, and in both cases, it was just reviewed by the Building Commissioner. Sage School renovation addition at 171 Mechanic Street, Bethany Church renovation addition through Rock Hill Street, Foxborough Regional School renovations and additions at 131 Central Street and 35 Commercial Street, St. Mary's Parking Lot at 50 Carpenter Street, The Heron Middle School renovation addition, 111 Mechanic Street, and Foxborough High School renovation addition. Those are all the ones that, in working with Bill Buckley, he and I could recall, do not require. And I also spoke with the Fire Building Commissioner, see. In the, then I gave the board's letters with regard to Kennedy Donovan. The first one is from Town Council to Arthur Folsom, dated May 3, 1988. Again, from Town Council, Rachel Gellman, to Arthur Folsom, pretty much saying that the use by Kennedy Donovan as offices, and they were a nonprofit educational corporation, even though it was just being used as offices, they still got the exemption under the Dover Amendment. Then there's a letter dated May 6, 1988, from the Building Commissioner at the time, to Kennedy Donovan Center, pretty much saying the same thing, that they were exempt and didn't have to do site plan, and just had to meet the reasonable regulations under the town bylaw. And then the last one on that is dated May 26, 2015, from the Building Commissioner at the time, to law firm Perry Hicks, DeShatie and Mello, again, stating the reconstruction of the Kennedy Donovan Center falls under the Dover Amendment, wouldn't require a site plan, but would be reviewed by the Building Commissioner. The other packet I gave you is copies of letters or memos that I got today from Gabby Jordan with regard to the requested seven sites. I don't know if you want me to go through them all, but for one extent-
Obviously, Lorraine doesn't have it, Kim doesn't have it, I don't know if Pat has copies of this.
No, because I just got this information today.
I think it would be helpful for them.
Yep.
I did send it to Town Council.
Oh, you did? Okay.
So the top one is from the Building Commissioner to the Savers Foxborough Regional School, dated February 11, 1999. And the third paragraph just states, again, this is the Building Commissioner, "I discuss my position with Town Planner Timothy Higgins, and after reading Bible Speaks versus Town of Lennox, he is in agreement that site plan review cannot be imposed for religious and educational uses." And the next paragraphs, the first sentence says, "Pursuant to 780 CMR 110.10 MSBC, the site plan will be filed with the Building Commissioner for purposes of issuing a building permit." Again, that had to do with the charter school. The next one is dated July 12, 2015, a memo from the Building Commissioner to Board of Selectmen, Board of Health Agent, water sewer commissioner, fire department, police, conservation, town planner, and highway department. And the sentence says, it's regarding the administrative review, educational zoning exemption from site plan review, Sage- exemption from site plan review, Sage School parking expansion. The second sentence says, "The educational use is exempt from the formal zoning requirements of site plan review." The next one is dated August 10, 2015, to the Sage School, again from the building commissioner. And the first sentence says, "Please be advised that administration review of the proposed improvements of the parking lot for the Sage School has been conducted by the zoning enforcement officer pursuant to Master General Law Forty A Section Three educational exemption." So again, he just did a review. The next one is dated March 13, 2008, again from the building commissioner to the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Board of Health, Water and Sewer Commissioners, Fire, Police Department, Highway, and Conservation Commission. First sentence says, "It, in accordance with the provisions of Master General Law Forty A, Chapter Three, an administration review is being conducted by this office for the proposed expansion of Foxborough Regional Charter School at 131 Central Street." Again, it was just going to be an administration review, no site plan. And finally, the minute meetings from September 24, 2015, for the Foxborough Planning Board. Under the planning, planner report, the fourth paragraph says, "The Kennedy Donovan Center is planning to demolish and reconstruct their building on Commercial Street. They are under the provisions of exemption use, so site plan review is not necessary." There was an administration review meeting with town departments, town department heads this afternoon, and I just went to discuss that. Again, site plan review was not being considered. And the information I got from Gabby Jordan also had, you know, things from the fire department expressing, you know, their opinion on different administration reviews that I didn't think was relevant to the question at hand this evening. I can review with the board all of court cases that were discussed in case O-1-23, if the board wishes, but I feel the board is well aware of those cases. They were well cited and well explained in that decision, so unless the board wants that, I'm going to move forward. But in that decision, I'd like to draw the attentions to note 13, which is on page eight of the board's decision on O-1-23, which states, "In view of our conclusions concerning the authority of the building commissioner to conduct, to, excuse me, to condition issuance of a building permit on site plan review and site plan approval, we question the authority of the planning board to concur that procedure, notwithstanding the fact that the petition of voluntary engagement in that proceeding, and the validity of the site plan approval." So this board even questioned whether the planning board had the authority to even hold that hearing. Additionally, in my review of more recent cases concerning the Dover amendment and childcare facilities, I couldn't find anything on point, you know, except for the town council brought up, which again, does not say what he thinks it says. But most of the cases I read were appeals from decisions of the reviews of the building commissioner that then went to the Board of Appeals, only Board of Appeals, that then went to the court cases, and most of them had to do with what was reasonable regulations. For example, one town was enforcing a hundred-foot setback, which the court ultimately said, you know, that that's just too much. Therefore, we respectfully request that the board uphold this appeal and actually case O-1-23, and determine that the building commissioner may not require any childcare facility to undergo site plan review and site plan approval with the planning board as a condition to the issuance of the building permit. No case law exists that contradicts the board's decision in case O-1-23. But finally, we would like to, you know, agree with the appeals court that we would have to undergo a site plan review with the building commissioner, again, limited to the application of reasonable regulations set forth in Chapter Forty A, Section Three.
So let me just ask you a couple of questions. Are you saying that site plan review, I think you're saying this, by the planning board is invalid as a matter of law, but site plan review by the building commissioner would be permissible?
No. One of the things I'm saying is, in your decision, you referenced that, saying that you weren't sure that was even a valid site plan approval. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. What we're saying is, you can't condition the issuance of a building permit for a childcare facility on site plan approval from the planning board, which is our appeal. But we do recognize that the building commissioner has the right to do a site plan review of the application, which is limited to the regulations under Dover amendment that are stated there. Again, we feel there's nothing that contradicts your decision back in O-1.
So, obviously, in 2001, building commissioner received an opinion from town council that site plan review by the planning board was not permissible, but yet proceeded with the requirement.
Yep.
And of course, then the case came to us.
Well, if I could...
And subsequent to that, that point has only handled it by an administrative review process. So I guess what you're saying is that it was the brilliance of our opinion that caused him to see the light.
Yes.
Oh, he's not here. I shouldn't have said that.
I was involved in that.
Well, we were too, but I don't know if you remember.
From the get-go, we met with the building commissioner at the beginning, and we didn't feel we needed to go in front of the planning board for site plan review. He asked us to go in front of the planning board, and actually, in your case, find it.
Yeah, I know it had already been done. That's my recollection.
Yeah. In your case, it states on page three, the first paragraph, last sentence, "Though Mr. Caspar emphasized that the site plan review process was to be informative and not to unreasonably restrict the use of land by zoning regulation, he also stated that the approval of site plan review is to be considered part of the building permit review process." And later on, that, that the planning board consideration was to be restricted to permissible areas of reasonable regulation, stated in Chapter Forty Eighty-three. Now, so I was involved in the site plan review. The reason we ended up in front of this board is, the site plan review got a hand. We had a number of meetings, I think four or five, with the planning board, and that's why we ended up filing for a building permit and coming here in front of this board, because it was going well beyond that, even though we were telling them that it couldn't go on that. So that's how we ended up here at that time.
Any other questions?
I'm unprepared for this case.
You're unprepared, or?
I'm unprepared.
Okay. You're here. Any questions?
No questions.
Kim and Lorraine, any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Lorraine?
No questions. No questions. Thanks.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to Scott and Pat.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and members of the board. That was a lot of information. Attorney Spillane is correct. I mean, he did meet with both myself and Paige Duncan, the land use director, on July 7. He proposed this daycare center, and during our discussion, I told him I would review all the material that was presented to me, and I would make a determination based on my opinion. And with that, in conferring with town council, I came up with this determination. And now, if I can go back to the statute, it says, "No zoning ordinance or by law in any city or town shall prohibit or require a special permit for the use of land or structures or the expansion of existing structures for the primary and accessory and incidental purpose of operating a childcare facility, provided, however, that such land or structures may be subject, may be subject, to reasonable regulations concerning bulk height of structures in determining yard size, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements." We have set in our bylaws under ten, section, I think it's section, chapter 275, section 10.5.31, process in place for site plan review for this purpose. Yes, the use is allowed, no matter what. That has the protected status under the Chapter Forty A, Section Three. As to case law, Attorney Costello's here, he can elaborate more on that, because that's way above my pay grade. But it is my opinion and my actual experience with the Dover that, yes, site plan review can be required, as long as it's reasonable. Some of the Bible speaks, Mr. Spillane speaks of or references was going over those reasonable regulations. So therefore, the court upheld the appeal because they were unreasonable. You cannot prohibit the use by making the site plan review unreachable, unattainable. It's not permissible. So if the board, which we have a process set in place for the planning board to see, they can review it, and as long as they stay within those perimeters, we should be good. And that was based on my opinion.
Is there anything that you can't discern in reviewing plans that would be any different than what the planning board would be able to pick up in a site plan process?
My job is to make sure that the building complies with building construction. Yes, zoning, but we have something in zoning in place already, and that's a site plan review. They're going to review, they're going to review the parking, they're going to review the bulk, they're going to review buffer zones. This is all out of my purview, in my opinion. Impervious surfaces and stuff like that. And they have peer review set up to review this and confer with them.
Any questions for Scott?
Just one quick question, Frank. This is the lot that we're speaking of. Is this where the Beer Garden was?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. Just want to make sure I, when I drove by, that was the right one. Okay.
Whatever goes there looks better than the stuff that's there now.
Absolutely. We're not saying that the use is not a valid use. We're not going to prohibit the use. It's just that we have, there's a process in place that everyone has to follow.
Okay.
And site plan cannot, you cannot deny the use under site plan. You can just reconfigure the space.
Pat, are you ready?
Here I am, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. As Commissioner Shipley has noted, we did discuss this particular issue prior to his finalization of his opinion. He did indicate to me that it was his opinion, based on his own experience and his interpretation of the bylaw, that the site plan review process would be required in this situation. I reviewed the current case law on the matter. I've had extensive experience with Dover amendment uses in the past, and I can say quite frankly that the interplay between site plan review and protected uses under Chapter Forty Eight, Section Three, has always been a very difficult balancing act, and the courts have recognized that fact. Each decision that is rendered on a Dover amendment issue is based on the specific bylaw in question and its application to the proposed protected use. In this particular situation, I agree with the determination of the building commissioner that the planning board site plan review process, as set forth in the Foxborough bylaw, could proceed as provided, subject, however, to the fact that, as the commissioner noted, this is a protected use under Forty Eight, Section Three, and the planning board's purview or review of the site plan in this particular situation would be accordingly limited or circumscribed by the rights that are afforded under Section Three. So the...
I didn't know that.
I'm sorry, was that a question?
No, I think somebody...
Karen LeBlanc, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Okay.
Pat, hopefully, we didn't lose you.
I'm still here.
Good.
All right. All right. So in this particular situation, upon discussing the building commissioner's perspective with him, I believe he's correct that the reasonable regulation of this particular childcare use, which is explicitly allowed by statute relative to bulk height of structures, determining yard sizes, lot area setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements, has to be determined by someone within the town, within the scheme of the town zoning bylaws. There is nothing in general law, there is nothing in your bylaws, that gives the building commissioner the express authority to limit or condition building permits according to those criteria. The only way the bylaw affords that level of regulation is pursuant to your site plan review process, or in the situation where a variance of special permit would be required, the permit granting authority would have that right. But absent a variance of special permit, which is not required in this particular situation, there has to be a mechanism whereby the town is afforded an opportunity to reasonably regulate this childcare use. In my view, and in the view of the commissioner, that mechanism would be via the site plan process that's provided in Section 10.5 of the zoning bylaw. Now, with regard to all the precedent in town relative to this particular issue, I don't dispute any of the history or any of the prior determinations that have been made by past boards or past building commissioners, building inspectors, but the fact of the matter is, they do not bind you here tonight, nor do they bind Mr. Shipley in his capacity as building commissioner in 2022. There's a well-established doctrine of municipal estoppel in the Commonwealth that indicates that zoning officers and boards are not bound by prior determinations made in their community. The reason for that, as the courts have clearly enunciated, is that citizens and other parties before zoning boards and building inspectors are entitled to, you know, a fair and unbiased application of the law as it applies then and there. Circumstances change over the years. Officers of the town, board members, change over the years. None of us, including town council, are bound by prior determinations rendered by our predecessors. Our obligation and the board's obligation tonight is to look at the law as it currently stands and apply it as you deem it appropriate under these circumstances. Now, in 2010, the land court did render a decision in the Jewish Cemetery Association versus Board of Appeals matter that was cited earlier. And in that decision, I think Judge Sands appropriately summed up the proper application of the Dover amendment to site plan review processes. And what he concluded, in essence, was that the case of Bible Speaks, which is the seminal case on Dover amendment, does not stand for a proposition that all site plan review violates the Dover amendment as an absolute matter of law. What he said was that you have to look at each particular bylaw and determine whether or not it violates the provisions of Forty Eight, Section Three. In our particular case, the site plan review bylaw will neither prohibit, nor will it require a special permit for this particular use to be approved. What it would do is give proper instruction to the planning board. It will allow the planning board to adopt reasonable regulations concerning the enumerated criteria that is set forth in the statute. the enumerated criteria that is set forth in the statute. If the planning board does that, and it doesn't exceed its authority, or impose regulations that are deemed to be unreasonable, are in excess of its authority, given the protections of this childcare use under 48, Section 3, its decision should be solid. I do not deem there to be anything per se invalid or illegal about our bylaw and its application. To that end, I would suggest that the issues raised in the appeal here today is somewhat unright for determination because there hasn't been any unreasonable regulation of this proposed use to date. The mere fact that the matters being forwarded to the planning board or will be referred to the planning board for review, in and of itself, does not unreasonably regulate or restrict this project. The statute expressly provides that regulation can be affected in certain enumerated areas. In my view, so long as the planning board stays within its lane and addresses the points in that particular area, it could very well approve the site plan for this project without any legal ramifications thereafter. And in the site plan review bylaw, I would note, just for the board's deliberation purposes, that one of the specific purposes of site plan review, 10.5.1.3, is to provide an orderly review procedure where site plans of proposed projects can be approved with reasonable conditions, which will further the purposes of these bylaws. That particular purpose can be implemented in conjunction with the requirements of Chapter 48, Section 3, which also requires reasonable regulation or reasonable conditions. Furthermore, the plan requirements set forth in Section 10.5.6 are generally consistent with what Chapter 48, Section 3 requires. They have to be reasonably imposed or implemented by the planning board in order to avoid running afoul of the protections afforded by Chapter 48, Section 3. So there's nothing per se, in my opinion, in the bylaw that crosses the line and violates the Dover amendment. Should the planning board, upon conducting site plan review, step over the line and impose a condition or a restriction that would exceed that quote-unquote reasonable regulation allowed by Chapter 48, Section 3, then there may well be an issue. I would suggest that, given the particular nature of this proposed use, the planning board should be made well aware, as I'm sure it would by the applicant, but it should also be well-versed in what the protections afforded to Dover amendment uses are and what the scope of its authority would be. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Kim and Lorraine, any questions for Mr. Costello?
Not at this time, thank you.
Frank, you want to?
Yeah, if I may. First of all, Attorney Costello talked about a linear court case that was annulled by the appeal court. And again, in that appeal court decision, it stated that the building commissioner does the review. So, you know, all this talk about what the site plan review does, I'm very well aware of, but the building commissioners that have been here in the past have done them. And we, as the applicant for any childcare facility, will file the plans, you know, that are typically filed with the planning board, but with the building commissioner. Now, again, in your case 01-23, you talk about a number of different cases. Cartwright, with regard to that case, the bylaw impermissively, this is the court, the bylaw impermissively imposed a requirement that a commercial daycare use undergo site plan review. It's right there, saying it was, there's a court case right there. Tally, the proposed exemption use could not be made subject to either variance procedures or site plan review. Bible speak, there's nothing in language in general law, Chapter 48, Section 3, which contemplates a requirement of site plans. Trustees of Tufts College, the Land Court judge promptly declared invalid the site plan and special permit requirements. Shapiro declared an requirement under the town zoning by for site plan review to be invalid in connection with the renovation, expansion of the structure for use as daycare. So there's no cases out there. You know, if you read the original Land Court case, I have one, it states that the plaintiffs appeared to adopt the blanket assertion that Dover amendment uses cannot be subject to site plan review. Their position was that you have to take what we give you. And that's what the argument was there. And the appeal board, you know, correctly stated that the, you know, the amendment that the town made to their bylaw, saying the plan, the building commissioner will do all Dover amendment uses reviews, is correct. The amendment is consistent with reasonable reading of Dover amendment. That is right in their decision. Town council didn't bring up the appeal court decision because it doesn't go to his argument. He brings up a just Land Court case that was overruled. Now, with regard to the site plan review, you in your own decision here says that the planning board could deny it and therefore not allow it. Also in there, you say that our determination does not prohibit the building commissioner from requiring a proposed childcare use to undergo a measure of site plan review. Mr. Caspar has authority to require that this and any other childcare facility submit plans and other information to determine if the proposal complies with the applicable visions of the Mass Building Code and those reasonable requirements of the bylaw that may be subject to municipal regulations according with Chapter 48.3. Prior building commissioners here did it and could do it. They got the administration staff, they would have all the departments review it, send them their comments, look at it, take it in, and do the review. And other towns do it. So it can be denied. So, you know, talking about the site plan, you know, is fine and good, and we will file plans according to the site plan with the building commissioner. The only issue here is whether childcare facilities are required to do site plan approval with the planning board. Your case said no, and there's been no case law since then that says otherwise. So I cannot see how it can now require site plan approval, just because this building commissioner wishes it.
It's not a wish, Mr. Chairman. It's in our bylaws.
No, no, just hang on.
You can have something in your bylaw that is superseded by state statute, and in this case, that's what it is. If that was not in the state statute, you'd be absolutely correct.
Pat, any final comments, or are you all done?
No, again, I think it's really a simpler issue than many may think, but we have a right to impose reasonable regulations, as the statute allows. My question is, tell me where in the bylaw or in any other authority it gives the building commissioner the unilateral right to impose those restrictions. I don't think you can. Yet someone has a right to do that under the Foxborough zoning bylaw. That would be the planning board through site plan review. That's all I have.
So let me, before asking any public comments, Lorraine, any questions?
Not right now, thanks.
Kim, any questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Kurt?
Not right now.
David, any? Okay, me neither. Anybody wish to be heard on this matter?
Scott wanted to be...
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our bylaw specifically said the planning board is the site plan review authority. So it does, like Attorney Costello said, and Attorney Spillane referenced, Wayland amended their bylaws to allow the building commissioner to do it, to have that authority. Our bylaws do not. Our bylaws are specific, and they say the planning board is the site plan review authority.
And our bylaws are no different than they were with regard to this issue as 2001?
Again, Attorney Costello says the board is not held to previous decisions.
Okay, let's...
Nor am I.
All right. Anybody wish to be heard? So Kim or Lorraine, just a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Okay. Lorraine, vote on it. Yes?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Let me start. And by saying that, you know, we obviously have a case that's precedent. I'm not at all adverse or reluctant to going against precedent if it's warranted. And one way it would be warranted, and believe me, I don't see any case law as changing anything, but one way would be if case law or some decision of the legislature had changed what the Dover amendment requires. The other reason would to go against precedent, in my mind, would be if I felt, and my colleagues agreed with me, that our decision in 2001 was wrong. I'm used to being chastised for being wrong at home, so why not here? I think what was before us in 2001, and what I understood, and what we were advised by town council led me to believe that that was the appropriate decision. What I do want to say, however, sort of in opposition to that, is the following. I think the two leading cases in this area are the Bible Speaks case and the Tufts College case. And nowhere in either of those decisions, and again, those are decisions of appeals courts and not of trial courts, nowhere in those decisions does either court say that site plan review per se is invalid. Now, in Bible Speaks, the court did invalidate the site plan review procedure that was before it, essentially by stating that it really went too far. First of all, it was in conjunction with a special permit requirement. There's wording in that decision in which the court indicates that the site plan review requirements would be appropriate for subdivisions or for cluster developments. In the Tufts College case, which dealt mostly, I think, with parking issues, in dealing with site plan, I think what the court, if I remember correctly, what the court said was that site plan is invalid with respect to unspecified present and future projects, but did not say that site plan review as a matter of law was invalid. One thing I find interesting is that, and I can't say how many towns have done this, but there are towns that do provide in their zoning bylaws for site plan review by planning boards. One such town currently is Wayland. In 2018, they amended at their annual town meeting the bylaw provisions that required site plan review by the building commissioner to now require it by the planning board. And if you look at the Wayland warrant for the town meeting, and I did, and for Frank's sake and Pat's sake, that was 170 pages in length, so you probably don't want to see anything, you know, like that here in Foxborough. But one of the arguments that was made in favor of amending that bylaw to require site plan by the planning board was that the planning board members are elected officials, whereas the building commissioner is an appointed official, and it would be appropriate for the elected officials of the town to address site plan matters relative to the Dover amendment uses, as they do with other uses. So what that bylaw currently says, or in part, is when reviewing and acting upon a site plan application for the principal use of land or building or structure for daycare, educational, nursery school, or religious uses that are exempt from regulation under Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 3, the planning board shall apply reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements as set forth in the zoning bylaw, except to the extent that the applicant shows that the regulation is unreasonable and unrelated to a legitimate municipal concern and will substantially detract or diminish the applicant's ability to conduct the exempt use. Framingham has a very similar provision in its bylaw. Concord does, in essence, as well, although I'll go into a little bit more detail as to what they require as far as site plan. However, there's wording in the Concord bylaw that says the board, meaning in this case the zoning board, and the planning board have the authority to place reasonable conditions on the aforementioned issues, but are not permitted to withhold approval of site plan review. A little bit closer to home, in 2016, Canton amended its zoning bylaw to add the following provision. No building, structure, or additional impervious surface exceeding 3,000 square feet, except a residential structure for single or two-family use, shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no non-residential use, including any charitable or philanthropic religious or educational use of purpose, shall be expanded in ground area or established in any, in an existing building not previously used for non-residential, run residential purposes, except in conformity with a site plan bearing and endorsement of approval by the Board of Appeals. In approving that bylaw amendment change, the Attorney General's office said, "As in Jewish Cemetery Association, it appears reasonable for the town to use a limited site plan review as the process by which it regulates the bulk and height of structures, yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements for such statutorily protected uses." On this basis, we approved a new Section 10.5.1. Now, I recognize that in each of these cases, in each of these municipalities, what they're dealing with is site plan that is specifically tailored to educational, religious uses, childcare facilities. However, in the Tufts College case, the court said, and I'm going to quote, "We reject the suggestion that only local zoning requirements that are drafted specifically for application to educational uses are reasonable within the scope of the Dover amendment. Nothing in that statute mandates the adoption of local zoning laws, which are tailored specifically to educational uses." Again, they're dealing with educational uses, but by analogy, we're talking, again, what we're talking about here tonight, any Dover amendment protected use. So I think that, and I'm not going to say, again, that our decision in 2001 was incorrect. I was obviously involved in it, and I think I wrote that decision, which is why I said it was a brilliant decision. But I think that we could, in essence, go against what we decided 21 years ago and say that site plan review by the planning board is permissible so long it's a reasonable regulation relative to the kinds of, the proviso of the Dover amendment, those eight different specific areas in which reasonable regulations can occur, and as long as it furthers a legitimate municipal interest. I think that, I'm confident that the plan... I'm confident that the planning board would, in reviewing a matter of this nature, act in that fashion. Again, without saying that our decision was right or wrong 21 years ago, I think we can take a different position today. And I base that on, and I appreciate your arguments, I base that on, you know, my reading of the applicable case law and my reading and understanding of what other towns have done, and obviously what other towns have done have been approved by the Attorney General's office. So let me turn it over to Kim and Lorraine and Kurt for comments.
Thank you, Barney. And so, previous brilliance aside, I am intrigued by the idea of, and really am in favor of elected officials making the reasonable regulations and conditions for something we might call a limited site review for uses like the daycare centers, educational uses, religious uses, as opposed to the building commissioner. Thank you.
And that's not an aspersion as far as Scott.
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, stop, please don't, please don't interpret it like that at all.
No, I'm just kidding.
I've got big shoulders, I don't take offense.
Lorraine?
You know, I think it makes sense, Barney. You know, those conditions that you explain, you know, the reasonable conditions that were described as reasonable. I would imagine those would be at a minimum would be of interest, you know, to the project, to the planning board, so I think it would make sense for them to be able to weigh in on that, you know, through their review, their regular review process.
Okay, Kurt?
So.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, so if that could be recommended, I guess, like, I'm wondering how that would happen.
I certainly don't think we can impose a condition on the planning board. I don't think we can tell them how to run their, their, you know, processes. I think that if we go in this direction, we could certainly indicate what, you know, we believe are the parameters under which they need to act, and again, I'm comfortable and confident that they would do so. If I'm wrong, I guess we'll have it back here, or maybe it'll be someplace else.
Okay, thank you.
Kurt?
I agree with what Lorraine just had just mentioned. Makes sense for the limited review.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion? I guess the motion would be either to approve or deny the the appeal if if you agree with me or what I was saying, which I think is the consensus, it would be to deny the appeal. So again, it's Lorraine, Kim, and Pat.
Mr. Chairman, matters of this nature typically entail a motion to either reverse or uphold the determination of the building commissioner, but I'll leave it to your pleasure.
I'm sorry, I I didn't quite hear, to either reverse or uphold the building commissioner's determination?
Determination, yes. That's what the appeal is seeking, reversal of the building commissioner's determination.
Okay. So would you frame that, Pat, as a motion to reverse or a motion to approve?
Well, let me suggest that the motion that is tendered be to reverse the decision of the building commissioner as requested in the application.
Okay.
And just so that the board is aware, under, there are going to be three members voting, Mr. Chair, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, under Chapter 48, Section 15, it requires an en masse vote
Right.
of all three members to reverse the building commissioner's determination.
So a a yes vote would be to reverse, correct?
That's correct. The application is requesting the reversal of the determination, so I think that.
That would be consistent with what Pat's saying. So a yes vote would be to reverse and a no vote would be to?
Uphold my decision.
Uphold.
Yeah.
Okay. So Kim or Lorraine, would you formally make that motion, please?
Kim, you're on mute. Apologies. So, moving to, so there's two ways we're talking about here, is this the, is this what we're talking about? Move to uphold the building commissioner's determination?
No, it's to, it would be to reverse the decision of the building commissioner as requested in the application.
Or uphold my decision.
No, reverse, stick with reverse.
All right.
So, so now I'm confused, so the building commissioner.
I'll tell you what, let me, let me let me state it, because I think I got it correctly, and you say so moved. So that, you would move to reverse the decision of the building commissioner as requested in the application?
So that would, so wait, so that means that the building commissioner would be in charge of the limited site plan review?
No.
Depending on how it's.
No.
No, the opposite.
The opposite, okay.
Because again, the building commissioner, his decision was that site plan review by the planning board would be required. So if we, if we reverse that decision, we're essentially upholding Frank's position. In other words, if we vote yes, we're upholding Frank's position. If we vote no, we're upholding the decision of the building commissioner.
Barney, so the review still goes in front of the planning board?
Well, again, Scott's letter was to, correct me if I'm wrong, to require
Site plan review.
Site plan by planning board.
Correct.
Frank is requesting a reversal of that determination. So if we, so on a motion to reverse the decision of the building commissioner as requested in the application, if we vote yes, we vote to reverse the decision, or to phrase it differently, we're voting in favor of Frank's appeal, in favor of what Frank has argued. If we vote no, then we're saying that the decision of the building commissioner is not reversed, and Scott can require the matter to go to the planning board for site plan review before he issues a building permit.
Okay.
Got it? Am I right, Pat? Just to make sure.
You're absolutely correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, so again, let me make the motion, even though it shouldn't come from the chairman. So I move to reverse the decision of the building commissioner as requested in the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so again, a no vote, a yes vote would be to reverse the decision. And basically, that would mean we're upholding Frank's appeal. A no vote would be to determine that Scott's decision that site plan review is required by the planning board would uphold that determination, his, his letter, his initial letter to Frank. Okay, so again, I got to do this by roll call, so Kim, yes or no?
No.
And Lorraine? Yes or no?
No.
And Barney?
No.
Yes or no? No. So we do not reverse and uphold Scott's determination. Frank, thanks.
Thank you.
I think, I think he could have gone to a site plan review by now and had the building constructed. I want to take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene with the Moore Street application. Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, good evening, folks.
Okay, the time being 7:15 PM and then some, we have the continued public hearing. 119 Moore Street Realty Trust requests a comprehensive permit under the Local Initiative Program pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to construct 52 condominium residential units, 25% of which will be affordable to households earning not more than 80% of the area median income. Property is situated at 119 Moore Street in the General Industrial District and is in a future Aquifer area overlay district. Just to, actually, can we get that off the screen for a couple of seconds?
Sure.
Okay, just want to sort of take attendance. So here in Town Hall are Dave Brown, Kurt Yegian, and Barney Overett. Kim Mellon is zooming, and Lorraine Brew is zooming. And Lorraine is zooming from Ireland. What time is it there now?
About 1:30 in the morning.
1:30 in the morning, so there's an Irish proverb that if you lose an hour in the morning, you'll be looking for it all day. I think by the time we're done tonight, Lorraine's going to be looking for a lot of hours for the rest of, rest of the day. Now, she promised me that she wouldn't have a Guinness by her side, but she didn't make that same promise as far as Irish coffee, so.
I'm using my Guinness pen.
Okay, well, she sort of promised. Also, Dylan O'Donnell from Environmental Partners is zooming, is Paige there? Did we lose Paige? Maybe we lost Paige, there's Paige. And I don't know if Judy is with us yet. And Paige's cat is there, but you know, Judy had indicated that she had another meeting and she would try to, you know, to hook in at some point during the evening. And Stephanie. And Stephanie Kiefer is also zooming. Am I correct? Yes. Okay. So also here in Town Hall besides us, and Diana, is Scott Shippey, the town's building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer. Welcome to the 40B world. Lorraine, you had indicated you had a disclosure.
Yes, I just wanted to go on record that I had filed a disclosure, conflict of interest disclosure. I have recently engaged with Bay Colony Group and Bill Buckley to assist my family with an application for a special permit in front of the planning board. So just wanted to go on record that I had filed that with the town clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. So since our July 21 hearing session, we've received the following additional materials: an email from Dylan O'Donnell providing a bullet point summary of Environmental Partners' prior letters concerning site and traffic analyses; an August 12, 2022 email from Terry Howe; the concept landscape plan prepared by Guarini Landscape; an August 23, 2022 letter and attachments from Drew Hoyt; and just this afternoon, it was a little bit after 5 o'clock when I saw it, we received a letter from Attorney Kiefer dated August 25, 2022, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. What I'd like is a motion to enter each of these into the record and waive the reading. Either Kim or Dave. Kim?
I move that we enter all of these into the public record as well as waiving a reading of each of them.
Second.
Okay, I gotta do a roll call. Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So what I wanted to spend most of the time tonight was just to go over the buildings, the layout, et cetera. I do have some more...obviously, we're running later than I had hoped, and I do have a few more administrative matters that I want to cover. So why don't we just say an hour's time?
Oh, sure.
Okay. At the September meeting, at this point in time, Chris Gallagher, the department, the director of the DPW, is going to be with us, and hopefully Dave Larissy, who's the deputy fire chief, is going to be with us to also answer some questions that we have relative to layout. So whatever we don't necessarily finish tonight, we'll talk about then, you know, as well. We'll pick up on at that time as well.
Barney, Paige said that Judy just signed on to.
Judy's there? Well, welcome, Judy. You're on.
Ready for us?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
I'm on, Mr. Chair. I'm just driving.
Okay, drive carefully. Be safe.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Go ahead.
All right, well, thank you again for having us. As you mentioned, our focus tonight was just around the design, the site design, the architectural design. I'm not a landscape architect, but I will give you a brief overview of the landscape plan as well that you just received, and then obviously happy to address any questions you guys might have. I know we've been before you a couple of times now. You guys have seen the site plan, that you know the site plan. I'll just briefly walk through some of the highlights of some of the principles and concepts we were trying to incorporate and address with the site layout. We have the site scheme up on the screen at the moment. As you all know, you access the site from the existing drive off of Moore Street across the existing bridge. And basically, what you find within the site is a circular loop drive that initially feeds you across the front. There's a series of duplex units that sort of back to the pond, front to that street, the existing house being halfway down that drive. That saved drive then sort of loops back around what is effectively the back of the fourplex buildings accessing their parking areas. So just creating a very simple loop, ease of access for service vehicles, emergency vehicles, the residents themselves. So that's pretty simple and straightforward. I will say the overarching goal of this was to try to organize this as a series of common green spaces that would be connected by walkways. And so in front of the existing house, we preserved a little green space so that from Moore Street, you really could still see the existing home, preserving that sort of historic view back through, while also creating a shared common area that would give all of the residents here a view back out to the pond itself. Behind the existing house, we've created a linear green space. I'll show you an example, and we show it in the perspective view as well. We have a series of sidewalks and walkways that feed you through those common green spaces, ultimately out the back into the town conservation areas. The fourplexes that line that, the lower units, all have front doors onto that space to help activate it. They'll have front porches, so hopefully they can be out interacting with their neighbors. And similarly, out at the edges, our attempt was to do something similar, maybe not at quite the same scale, but some sort of walkway along the fronts, if you will, of those fourplex buildings in the upper right corner and along the left edge as well. Those buildings would front out onto a shared walkway, a little common amenity space. And again, ultimately, all those connect back to the town conservation land and to one another. So really, we were trying to create an internal walkable network, even though that doesn't necessarily ultimately go back out to Moore Street where there aren't sidewalks, but certainly we thought that was an important feature to include within the neighborhood itself. In terms of the building types, again, I've already referenced that we have a couple of duplexes, which are the yellow colored buildings along the pond's edge. Again, they have their front doors right on that drive, right on the walk that's along that drive, and then they basically back out to the pond. We've included front porches again for those, but also back porches for those since they'll enjoy the views out to the pond. The orange buildings, those are each a four-unit structure where you have essentially two units on the ground floor, two units above, with four individual car bays on the back. So each unit has a single car garage. The duplexes also each have a single car garage, and I'll walk you through those floor plans in a moment. What else about the site plan? There is a grove of existing trees we wanted to preserve here at the front of the site as well, so we worked to kind of work around those to make sure those were kept there as well. Moving on to the residential units themselves. Actually, here's an aerial view first. So here you can see to the right, that's that existing bridge that brings you in. So you can see the series of duplex cottages that are along the pond's edge, that shared common space with a little gazebo amenity space out onto the pond with the existing house just beyond. You can see that linear green space feeding off behind the existing house, ultimately out to the conservation land. And you can kind of see the loop road as it sort of peaks between the buildings and around and back through here as well. First, we'll look at those fourplex buildings. Again, as a reminder, the ground floor units have their front doors onto that green space. The upper floor units actually have a door that comes off of the back, and I'll show that to you now. So here is the typical floor plan for those. On the left is the lower unit. So the green space would be sort of to the bottom of the page. You could see the front porch here that looks out over that green space. We have an entry door at that point that basically delivers you to a great room, a shared living, dining, kitchen space here in the front corner. It gets light and air on two sides, which is really great. To the left, we have our primary bed suite. So we have a nice primary bedroom here, a pair of closets, its own bathroom on this side. As you get through the common, the living, dining, kitchen space, we have a rear vestibule. Off of that, we have a second bedroom. We have a bath that's for that second bedroom, but also for common use, laundry room, utility closet, and ultimately, a door back out to their single car garage that's, again, accessed off of the rear drive. The upstairs unit, very similar layout, the only difference being that you actually access it from the back. We have a rear entry here that delivers you to a stair that would bring you up to a hall, and then you can see the layout's very similar, the common bath, the bedroom in the back, living, dining, kitchen in the corner. In this case, they have a balcony that looks out over those green spaces, the primary living space, very comparable to the first floor. And in terms of what that looks like, this is half of that building. So again, this would be mirrored over on the other side. That's how you get a fourplex. You know, there's two units on the ground floor, two units above. So this is what the elevation would look like from the green space, that being the entry door for the lower unit in this location. As you tuck around the side, you can see, again, the porch is here on the corner. This is the triple bay window that's into the dining room area. You can begin to get a sense of the, as it starts to step down and massing back towards the garages to the back of the unit. Obviously intended to be very traditional, very contextual, very appropriate for Foxborough. If you see, we'll show you some pictures of the existing house, really meant to sort of pick up on the scale and character of the existing house that's out there. So that is the fourplex building. Next, we'll look at the duplex cottages. So in this case, the pond is towards the top of the page. You have the back porch looking out over the pond, and the drive is in the front. So they have their one car garage accessed off the drive, also have a front porch. Their front entry is off of the front porch. In this case, a more linear arrangement, living, dining, kitchen to the back. The single car garage delivers you to an internal vestibule that delivers you more or less to the kitchen, which is always a good thing. A primary bedroom on the ground floor, bedroom, bathroom, walk-in closet, but a half bath in this case for guests. And then if you go upstairs, you can see we tried to organize the massing of the second floor to one side so that when you attach these, the two-story masses get a little separation, so they start to feel more like individual cottages instead of one large structure. On the second floor, we have a second and third bedroom sharing a full bathroom and a small loft space that just provides a little bit of additional living space. These days, home offices are a hot commodity. Be a great space for a home office. So these are three-bedroom units. And then in terms of the elevation, again, on the left, this is half of the unit. Again, it would be mirrored over, but you can see the idea of it being almost like a two-story cottage that just happens to be attached to its neighbor with the one-story hyphen of the garages. And then as you come around the corner, you can see a number of windows for some of the living spaces for the common loft up above. And then you can start to see that rear porch as well that would be looking out towards the pond. I will note that when we drew these, we drew them as if they were on flat grade. The reality is, is the grading actually drops off behind these. So these units will actually probably have a walkout basement. So I don't know if we'll potentially offer those as a potential finished space or not, but what'll be nice is those rear porches will actually be a little bit elevated, more like a deck looking out down into the pond itself. Then just briefly, again, on the left, and these are a little tough to make out, but just a couple of photographs of the existing house. Again, so you can see, we were trying to pick up on the materiality, the detailing, the scale of that building as it related to the new buildings we were proposing. And on the right is a project of ours that's in Concord called Riverwalk. It's a different scale. These are just single-family cottages, but we did a similar thing there where those cottages fronted into a common green space. And so I did want to highlight things like the common walks. The walks are actually on both sides of the space. What's nice is they help delineate between what is sort of the semi-private front yard of those units as a transition to their front porches, whereas the spaces between the walks are meant to be more of like a shared amenity. In ours, you'll see, we're proposing sort of a lawn area in those spaces. This one had, you know, some little stones that you could sit and play on and a few shade trees planted there. You can also get a sense here, this one also had this idea of a common pavilion down at the end of that. We had a similar, we have a similar thing proposed here at one end of that central green space before you get into the town conservation lands. So again, just thought this might be a useful reference in terms of what we're trying to create by those central green areas. And then lastly, I don't think we need to go into detail about the architecture. It's wood frame construction, pretty straightforward, pretty simple stuff. We just included this as an example of what it might be. Certainly trusses for the roofs, the floors, we're still not sure if that's a truss or a TGI or dimensional lumber, some of those things we still have to work out, but pretty conventional wood frame construction is what we're proposing here. So then with that, I also wanted to just kind of quickly share with you the landscape plan. As I mentioned, I'm not a landscape architect, so hopefully you won't be asking me too many questions about what the Latin words mean for the various species proposed. But in talking it through with the landscape architect, certainly the general principle was to propose primarily native plantings, native species that would be drought resistant, you know, used to this kind of environment, no invasive species or exotic species. Let me zoom in a little bit on the plan so you can see it a little bit better. Generally speaking, the idea is to line the drives with, and the sidewalks with shade trees. Some of those might be ornamental. Certainly in the central spaces as well, we would have shade trees in those locations. Here you can begin to see the idea of us including a variety of perennials and grasses and shrubs in that zone, sort of between the porch and the common walk. And then the space within the common walks is where you have the sort of shared amenity space, the turf areas. So a similar pattern in these other spaces, even though they're a little bit smaller, you know, a variety of plantings in the sort of front yard zone with the common areas potentially being turf. One of the thoughts here, too, was by including more planting areas that's less turf that you have to mow and maintain, so really trying to limit the turf to the sort of common areas and hopefully have a variety of landscaping to sort of delineate those spaces and define those spaces. And so again, you know, there's a, he included the palette, the variety of plants we would likely use. So there are a couple of different sorts of shade trees we would utilize, a few evergreens where some screening might be required, and then a combination of shrubs, perennials, and grasses for some of those decorative planting areas. So again, in these drawings, intentionally, we're not trying to begin to suggest where each of those might go. It's meant to just be more illustrative of that idea of where the planted beds are, where the turf areas are, where the shade trees are located.
So looking at the landscape plan, so the green space in the middle, so where the units that face that green space in the middle, they would actually open up?
That's right. So it's hard to make out, but there's front porches. So there's a front porch right there. He'd have a little lead walk out to that sidewalk, another lead walk here to this guy's porch. So, you know, around this space, you have 10 units that have porches into that space, plus the back of the existing house creating that space. This was that gazebo I was referencing that you'd see down, you know, at the other end of that turf space. Similarly, on these edges, again, we've got six units with porches along this edge. And then this edge, we still need to kind of look at a little bit, too. This is another example where I think we have enough grade change that there might be a walkout condition on those. So we might need to see if those are actually a special type of unit that have some kind of a bonus room down in a lower level that would engage with that walkway over there. But that's the intention for those. Again, the duplexes have their own porches that are on the front that directly connect to the walkway that's in the front of those. So the street kind of shifts in character. When it's in front of the duplexes, we're really thinking of it as sort of a front yard. Then when you get back into the fourplex area, we're really trying to transition more to the green spaces being the fronts with the drive really being more about parking access, but there are units that also access off of the back of there as well, so...
And each one of the buildings, same size?
Same size, that's right.
Are they all identical?
Identical in terms of footprint and, you know, scale and the layout inside. I think we'll work to get a little bit of variety on the outside. I think we'll have a couple of different porch details, maybe play with how the windows are spaced, certainly color, maybe material. So we'll get a little more variety in that sense, but the plan itself, the footprint of itself is consistent.
And how much distance between units typically?
Usually, we try to plan for a minimum of 12 feet. I don't remember where we are in the most current civil plan, Bill, I don't know if you know. 12 is usually a target we try to hit just because that's a simple, for the fire separation requirements for the walls themselves, you know, a 10-foot separation. Yeah, and we usually just give ourselves a little bit more to play with. There probably are a few locations here where we're a little bit closer than 12, so we would do whatever fire ratings are required for that, but...
Yeah, it looks like at the closest, it'd be like 10, but at least 12.
Yeah. So...
You're done?
I'm done. I'm happy to go into a lot more detail if you want on certain things, but again, that's the sort of general...
Let me just think of a couple of questions, I know Dave's got a bunch. I think in the initial application, you know, Bill indicated that heating would be by propane. And then I think last time it was mentioned it would be oil, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any thought ever given to electrification? I think I read an article in The Globe recently about a complex up in Lexington where everything was going to be with heat pumps and electrification. Ever give any thought to something of that nature, solar panels, what have you?
Yeah, we've not had that specific conversation with the client. We certainly have a number of projects that are all going towards fully electric, just for a number of reasons. So I would certainly be open to that idea, but we've not really talked that through with Mike specifically.
Okay. All right. I guess this next question's probably more for Bill. Road width, how would that compare with your typical Foxborough subdivision with what the planning board would typically require?
So the road widths in here are 20 feet, which is the minimum standard when you're talking about National Fire Protection Regulations. So the town of Foxborough Fire Department usually wants at least 20 feet. Sometimes they'll waive it down to 18. So in this particular case, it's 20. And the Foxborough subdivision regulations, for this number of units, you'd be up around 24. Minimum subdivision regs width in Foxborough is 20 for a roadway. Um, minimum subdivision regs width in Foxborough is, is twenty for a roadway.
So you're saying twenty feet, then that's the answer, is it twenty-four?
So twenty is, you know, gutter to gutter, which is what this is. Twenty-four would be, um, I think. It's either over six or twelve units in Foxborough. For a residential subdivision, it goes to twenty-four, but it's never more than twenty-four.
But we've designed a twenty?
But we've designed a twenty, which also just as a, a, um, frame of reference. That Cary Lane down there off of East Street, off of, um, Community Way, those units, that's a twenty-foot driveway as well.
Obviously, one of the questions we want to, you know, deal with, you know, privacy.
And I'll say that you, we go for that because that, that does meet the NFPOA PA, as long as the fire chief's happy with it. We're trying to minimize the dimension, both to reduce impervious area, it also reduces travel speeds. We're trying to keep traffic, you know, moving slowly through this community. So twenty is what we stand typically target almost in every project that we do, and usually we're successful. As long as the fire chief's happy with it, it usually works out as a pretty good design standard.
Well, I, I agree to find a chief is an important aspect of this. But I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
It's time to go.
Go ahead.
So I, and looking at this, because some, there's some curbs along the way, you know, going around, and I start to wonder about. Some big, uh, hook and ladder truck, or whatever we call them these days, being able to make the, the turns, you got the curbs over there. Um, you know, has that been kind of thought into all that, really? Oh, and then trees too, because you got trees overhead, so.
So this, the answer is yes, Dave. So what we've done is, when we, we have a, a program, it's called Auto Turn, everybody uses it. And we have the model that Foxborough uses for their, I don't know what they call it either, hook and ladder truck. And we make sure that they can make the turns throughout the facility. So we look at that, um, right up front when we do our analysis.
And, and the, the fire chief usually reviews that and signs off on that as well, to make sure that they're comfortable with it.
Aren't we expecting to meet with?
Yeah, next month. Yeah. And Chris Gallagher's already said he'll be here and, and Paige that she would follow up with, uh, Dave.
Yeah, get done.
She's already contacted, yeah.
So I'll be asking them, you know, the same kind of questions. I do recognize that they have the sign-off on all of it. I guess I did mention, you know, also the tree clearance up, up overhead, the, the overhead business. So we got, you know. We've got Jordan's Furniture Delivery Truck, you know, going through. Is he gonna have proper overhead clearance to be not?
So typically what we do, and this is the landscape guy, you know, if you look at the trees on the streets, we always try to do, or they try to do, col- col- col-? Columnar? There you go, too many syllables. So the columnar trees, you know, we're not looking for ones that go out. So the trees along the edge, we're looking for those, but we'll take a look at that again to make sure that, you know, the, the ones that are being specified here, uh, meet that standard.
Is, uh, traffic direction gonna be one-way around there?
We were, we were expecting two-way.
With twenty foot?
Yeah, with twenty foot, that's, that typically works fine, so.
Okay. And would there be parking, uh, permitted on the road network in there?
No, so we, we definitely specify where the parking is allowed. So for the residential units, they have a one-car garage. We've set those far enough off the drive that you, they can fit a second car in the driveway. In addition to those, we've identified, we've included, you can kind of see them in a few of these locations. We have a couple of locations where we specified visitor parking, so that would be in, in addition and off of that twenty-foot drive lane. So there would be no parking allowed within the twenty feet, because that's, it's important to maintain that as clear as fire access.
And, and that would obviously be something, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but it would be something that have to, um, specify in the HOA, correct?
Correct, correct.
Well, the, the, uh, the thing I'm again wondering about, something for you guys to consider, with, what is it, fifty-two units? I would think every weekend, somebody's gonna have some sort of a gathering, where they're gonna create a bubble of vehicles. And we're saying, we don't want them on the street. I, I get that. So where do they go? I mean, and the parking in people's driveways is limited, and they're certainly probably not gonna ask their neighbor about using their driveway, so.
Yeah, so that's why we in, we included some visitor parking spaces as well. I don't know, did we end up at six or?
I think it's, I think it's, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There's ten.
There's ten, sorry.
For the whole, for the whole.
There's, there's ten visitor spaces.
See, and that's where we get in, where we get into my, some bubble of people, is the only way I can describe it, you know, it's, uh. It's grandma's birthday and everybody shows up and there's, you know, twenty, twenty-five of them there, which is not an outrageous number. But, you know, where, where are the cars going? What are they, what are they, so, just something to think about, uh, and answer for that. And my last question at the moment is, um, school buses, is there gonna be some sort of. You know, gathering place for the, for the kids to get picked up by the buses? I, I know in other projects we've done, it's been kind of outside of the street.
You're like having a, a kiosk?
Yeah.
Out, out by the roadway?
Well, or some other idea.
Like what we did.
Kind of like that was done at the Domain.
Yeah.
We haven't talked about it, we certainly would, would have a discussion with, uh.
Yeah, I, I think it's something you need to, to think about. I'm not seeing where it should be, but, you know, once that become, you have that, then that becomes a bus stop.
Entry of, of Moore Street, you can ask your client.
Yeah, I don't know what the policy here is. Most, most towns, the, the buses won't go into a private drive. They want to only be on a public road. So it suggests if we were gonna include it, it'd be something out near Moore Street.
I don't, firstly, I don't care where it is, but you need something.
Well, we may require a location.
Or may require. So that's what I have.
Okay. Um, for easier, since you're here, as opposed to go to Kim and Lorraine first, but any questions?
Uh, yeah, just, you know, echo Dave's opinion on the parking, the visitor parking. Yeah, when you say the materials, you were gonna play with some of the materials. Obviously, it's gonna be keeping in context with the neighborhood and all that kind of stuff. The material variances will be still within those contexts, I presume.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I imagine we'll be primarily clabbered siding, possibly with some shingle. You know, synthetic trim, you know, the, the kind of typical things we would expect for residential construction around here.
Right.
And we're not, we're not getting fancy with corrugated metal or anything crazy out here, so.
Would you be doing vinyl or anything of that nature or?
We haven't talked about that, but my assumption has always been we'll be doing fiber cement siding. That's pretty typical and standard for this kind of a project. It's synthetic trim, it, it, long-term, it, it holds up, it looks, it looks a lot better typically too, so. But again, we haven't talked about that specifically with the client, but that's been my working assumption.
Kim, Lorraine, Paige, Judy, whoever else is there?
Yes, uh, thank you. I will just jump in. A couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, I appreciate using native plants and shade trees, and, and curious, how will the vegetation be watered?
Yeah, so in all likelihood, there will be irrigation. Um, and whether or not it's long-term irrigation or just a strategy to irrigate for the first few years, the landscape architect definitely said. You'd wanna, you'd wanna have an irrigation plan certainly for the first few years as things get established. Um, he said even the lawn areas would likely probably want to be irrigated. Again, that's not something we've specifically talked through with the client to come up with a determination, but. We're aware that you'd want to have some kind of strategy to make sure that they're gonna have the best chance of surviving and looking good here, so.
And what would be the water source for the watering of the vegetation?
Well, it can't be, it cannot be town water, um, because you, the water department doesn't. I think the regulation is anything over ten thousand square feet for a commercial or building like this. Um, it has to be. A well, if they were gonna do watering, have a, have a sprinkler system, so it would have to be a well.
Okay, thank you. So I think that as we get into environmental issues in September. I know one of the, um, the things we'll be talking about is any sort of waterborne contamination that there, there may be in the area. Certainly using a well in that area. And you're sprinkling that on, let's say, the, the turf that kids may be running on. Um, I certainly think that may be something that we want to discuss in September as we move into, you know, that sort of an issue. Uh, let's see, I appreciate the traditional nature of the design of the units and keeping with the existing house. And will owners be allowed to, uh, plant anything on their own, or this is just gonna be planted by and maintained by the homeowners association?
Yeah, again, that's a, that's a detail we haven't talked through. I will say in my experience with a project of this sort, usually you do. You don't have the residents, you know, plant their own stuff. The idea is to have something that's cohesive and that the, you know, you're, you're probably paying somebody to actually maintain it. And so that's to make sure somebody doesn't introduce something that isn't appropriate to the space. Um, and because we don't, we don't necessarily have, I, I suppose maybe on the duplexes, maybe you could suggest along the backside, you know, where it's more of like their own backyard. Maybe we could allow for a provision, but again, I think that would be regulated by the, the HOA condo docs.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Barney, your, your suggestion about electrification and heat pumps, I thought that was very, very interesting. I'd be interested in, um, hearing a little bit more about that as, you know, we go a little bit further. Very, very interesting. Uh, I'm a little bit concerned as a few other people have expressed, so we've got fifty-two units. And we might be, we might say two people, uh, you know, a unit, two, two car owners per unit, and we're only gonna have. That's a lot of friends and family for, you know, a hundred and four people easily. And probably most likely more, and only ten visitor spaces. So I totally agree with Dave. I'm very concerned about having a bubble. Of cars when someone has a birthday party, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, that, that, that I find very concerning. And I'm not sure how this goes, but I know at least a very long time ago, at Foxborough, when you had a kindergartner, this is in regard to buses. When you had a kindergartner, I, I believe they wanted to pick up kindergarteners directly at their house. Uh, it was sort of a safety, can, safety issue. I don't know that that's the case any longer. My, my frame of reference has become very long on that. Uh, but, but that's certainly something that would be interesting to find out. What, what is the school's position on kindergarten pickups? Thank you. That's all I have for the moment.
Yeah, Kim, we, we had, um, a comment early on from the, uh, school department. And I don't believe they raised that as a, a question or a concern. I, I think the only thing they were concerned about was some central pickup for, for students. But I, that's something I think that it's appropriate to follow up on. Kim, any other questions?
No, thank you.
Stop sharing this so we can see them instead.
I have one more.
Yep, let me hit Lorraine first. Uh, Lorraine?
I just wanted to echo the concern about the number of guest parking spaces to make sure that there's some safe area. You know, for more than probably ten guests at one, at one time, I would think would happen on a pretty regular basis. So that's my little comment.
Okay. Um, Paige, oh, actually, Dave has, has another question. Let me hit Dave before I go to Paige.
So can we, um, just get the big map up?
Yeah, certainly.
So I've noticed, um, at the end of each of the, the roads as they just go north. There's some allotment, I guess, for some old roads that may have been there. The tree, tree, like, see the nubs?
Up here?
No, come, who's driving the car?
I am, but I'm not sure where I'm driving.
So go up and, uh, where, how to describe it?
He's here? No.
The driver, those paths?
Talking about back here?
Those paths, right.
Yeah, into the conservation.
They are just paths. They don't, uh, have, and the fire department might have more to say about it, but. If, if you had a major fire going and people want to get their cars and they want, they want to preserve their property, put that as a scenario. Meanwhile, we got all the fire trucks, you know, rummaging around and they're gonna, they're gonna probably swallow up whatever road network there is there. So I, I, I looked at those and said, well, maybe if not, so be it, but it just struck me as kind of a little escape route to. Put your Porsche, you know?
Yeah, it's conservation land, it's all conservation land back there, and they've, um, they're actually, um. I was just going through my notes, one of the original meetings we had with some of the town's professional staff, as Jane noted that she would like to see some. Access from this site to their paths back there, because they think that, um, with the additional, I think I'm paraphrasing, I could be wrong, but. I think her point was they have problems with kids back there. And so if you have people blocking the paths or watching the paths, that it'd be less likely for them to go back there. But right now, there's a path that goes through there, it's almost invisible, where the water line used to be, or the water line is still there. But we'll be running a new water line through it, so we will be clearing it. I did talk to Chris Gallagher, you can ask him at the next meeting. So they'll be clearing an area because they still want to maintain their thing, but it certainly won't be big enough for a car.
Okay, so it's just another small piece on the cars and space?
Yes.
If that became known as a public asset access point to the conservation land?
You would need parking.
We need a, you know, not a lot, but you know, where are people gonna park their cars?
It's not going to be public access. It's, it's to be access for residents of that facility, so it's not gonna be private access or anybody else.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Uh, Paige, any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Paige, can I put you on the spot? Do you mind?
Yeah.
Want to see her?
No.
Yeah, why not? Um, same question I asked you when you and I were talking a few weeks ago. If this was a conventional subdivision, what would we need to be concerned with?
Um, I think I did reply, but, um, let me go off the top of my head. We look at dead end lane, um, road width. Uh, sidewalks, lighting, street trees, um. Drainage. I think, I, I would have to look at my list, but, um. Those are the ones that come to the top of my head.
You probably want a central male location, something of that nature?
Oh, yeah, that, yep, thank you.
Okay. So let me turn back to Jeremy. Sidewalks, lighting, those things.
Yes, the sidewalks, I think we've, we addressed, and it would certainly have called out and planned for. Um, I don't think lighting's something we've necessarily added into the plans. I will say for these sorts of communities, we try to not overdo it with lights, right? So often, we might have a street lamp at some of the intersections. That's usually one place that it's, it's, makes sense to have a, a street light. Otherwise, all of these porches and balconies will likely have front lights. That's usually enough light to light the sidewalk areas and things along that nature, so. Um, that's a detail we just haven't, haven't gotten to, um, is, is lighting, but that's what I would imagine that approach would be.
Mm-hmm, okay. And there are sidewalks or not within the complex itself?
We do have sidewalks, yeah.
On both sides of the road or?
Uh, not, well, I'll, I'll highlight them again here real quick. So we have, in front of the duplexes, there's a sidewalk that runs along that side of the street. All the way down and through. Um, we have a sidewalk that loops down and into this green space. Uh, that walk has a few connections across at each of the, um, common green spaces. And so then you'd have a, a walk that runs along the front of these units, along the back. Back through here, along the fronts of these units, and the fronts of these units. So it, it really is like a continuous path, right? You could be sort of walking and keep connecting and looping through, so. We try not to have them, with the exception at this end, because there really isn't anywhere else to go. You know, it is, it's meant to be sort of a continuous loop. There aren't a lot of sort of dead ends of sidewalks. We didn't include them in this, in the back area, because it really is more of like a parking, parking area. Again, with, with the number of, of cars and residents we're talking about here, you know, the, these aren't heavily trafficked streets, you know, mu- like many residential communities. I'm sure you could certainly just go for a walk around the drive if you want. That's how I'd probably walk my dog if I lived here, instead of necessarily using the sidewalks themselves, so. Um, so we think we have plenty of sidewalks and connections where they, where they make sense.
So going back to, um, an earlier question, I think that, that Dave asked, if, if there was a. School bus pickup drop-off point, say on, on Moore Street. Or even where the bridge is, in front of the bridge. If I'm living in one of the units in the rear, and I have a couple of children who go to, to school, would they be able to walk? On a sidewalk early in the morning to get to that drop-off point?
There was no sidewalk on the, um, the right side of that river.
So in other words, once you get out of the, where the buildings are, there's no?
There's no sidewalk, but if you, you know, we discussed this, so if you, if you, if you decide that the sidewalk is appropriate, you could tell us that and we would add that in. you could tell us that and we would add that in there. And really, it has to do with things like, not to get into the technicality of it, but trying to minimize any activity within the riverfront area. But if the board, in this case, the zoning board of appeals decides that the appropriate access is 20 feet of pavement with a sidewalk, then that would overrule, not necessarily overrule, but the conservation commission must accept that judgment and allow us to do it. So if the board feels that that's appropriate, then just tell us so and we would, we would add that in there.
Okay.
And of course, the fire department would have a problem with a wider, boy, I'm losing my voice, with a wider road.
Yeah, with, it's not, it would be, it would be a, it would be a 20-foot driveway, which right now, I'm not sure what it is now, maybe it's 15, 16 feet, it's not very wide. And we would widen that to 20, because that's the minimum standard for the fire department. And then if the board wanted a sidewalk along that, we would put a sidewalk in there as well.
Mm-hmm, okay.
See, I just kind of wonder about these new, I'm gonna call them mega fire ladder trucks. You know, they seem to be so long, maybe it's just the bulk. How they're gonna get around, you know, and you, I'm sure you can bet that if something gets going there, you'll have to have Foxborough and Mansfield rolling because of where it is.
That's why we, we have a model that we use, it's, it's for the Foxborough ladder truck. And actually, it's quite tight. It does a, it does a good, it's, it's not like the ones you, we were just talking about with some guy in the back there making the turns.
I know, I couldn't think what to call it, you know?
Yeah, it is, it's a ladder truck. But we, we do it and we make sure of it and they review our stuff. And at our next meeting, we'll make sure that we have, we'll give you the, the auto turn plan that shows. We've already shown it to the fire department.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay.
Hopefully, I'm done, done this time.
Scott, any questions?
Not at this time, but I will be working with the deputy laryssee just to confirm that, that fire department access is adequate. That is, that is a concern of mine, the trees are. This plan looked like they would be impactful on that ladder truck. But again, I'll have to go by, I don't have that, um, that report in front of me, that the, the system that they use, so I, I can't make that determination right now. But I will work closely with the deputy laryssee on this.
Okay, good. Before I open to questions from the public, so I don't forget, anything new on the DEP matter? Nothing?
Nope.
Still waiting? Par for the cost with them. Any questions from the public? And again, please identify yourself by name and address.
May I just be quoted, Richard? Mr. Chairman, thank you, Drew White and I, we met last night.
Let me ask you a question. Are you here speaking on your own behalf or behalf of a client? Or both?
This, what I'm about to say is, just on my own behalf, it's just a short comment with respect to the question or issue that was the main point discussed about visitor parking. And I was just wanted to suggest, seems it would be appropriate to ask the applicant to run that vehicle travel model, showing the fire truck coming in and out, but to have it run with a realistic scenario with visitors at the site, you know, with, you know, what, what does it look like when it's grandma's birthday or, or, or the kid's birthday, or it's the Super Bowl party or the grad party? A realistic assessment of how many visitor cars are actually going to be at the site and run the vehicle, the fire department vehicle access model under various scenarios, you know? We know, we know it's going to exceed the, the marked visitor spots. So run the model with, you know, 10 randomly dispersed vehicles throughout the site, or 15, whatever, various numbers. I don't think it would probably be that big of a deal to run that model on those scenarios. And I think it would put a fine point on and maybe help visualize the concern that I think everybody has, which is how the vehicles get in and out of there, especially fire vehicles. If there's a fire, when there's a party going on in the neighborhood. So that was, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. And I gather that's something that you, you said you would be speaking with Deputy Chief?
I will speak to him.
And again, he'll be here, hopefully, and we'll, you know, address those. Any other question, you, yes?
And Mr. Chairman, they're called tillers, those ladder trucks.
Oh. Thank you.
Um, Anne Marie Anderson, 18 Spring Street. And I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate that I think that that needs to be like a parking plan, because clearly people have visitors, but also the, the kids coming down the driveway, like, with people leaving to go commute, you know, you're, you're rushing to the train station because you live there. And then meanwhile, uh, my third grader, my fourth grader is like going down the driveway to wait for the bus stop. It just, that seems, you know, I'm just, you worry about tragedies happening. And also, I just wanted to just kind of point out again that we're talking about 52 condos. Is it four buildable acres, six? I know it's six acres altogether, but it was four acres. So I just wanted to just kind of, as a public comment, just say, I just think that's a lot. So, but I don't, I guess I don't really have a question, that's just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Any, yes?
Hi.
Hello.
Jessica, 71 Moore Street. Hi, Mr. Chairman, how you doing today? Um, I just wanted to actually get a little bit more clarity around those paths into the conservation land. It sounds as though they're going to be completely privatized and there's going to be no access to the walking paths back there, which is...
That's what?
That's what I think I heard.
Yeah.
I said that public will not be able to access them through our property. It has nothing, well, we can't control what goes on in the town land, but yes.
Um, Joan Gallivan has a comment.
Joan?
Um, it's Joan Gallivan, 9 Cannon Forge Drive. Um, I'm gonna speak, I'm not in a butter here, and I don't live that close that I'm gonna be affected at all. I'm just raising some concerns. And I think I've been hearing them all along, that, that people, it's, when you look at this kind of a development, it looks like it's a, almost totally, well, let's say substantially, overburdening this land. I mean, this land, it's a, it's, it's almost an island, or it's at least maybe a peninsula. And it does a bit, a butt, even wetlands here, conservation around it in other areas. It may be contaminated and toxic and so forth. So it just, looks just totally overburdened. And I think that that should be in your minds when you're looking at this development. And when you're applying all of these other, both standards and, and things that might have been required and so forth. And realize that, that should be what we're all thinking of. You know, if, if he was looking towards some affordable housing in here, the developer, and, and wanted to put five duplexes, um, you know, or that's two on each, so that's what, 10? You know, and he's got four acres that he's using. You know, half an acre was, was the standard before. I don't know if that's still what it is, it probably is. So, um, it's just is totally overburdened. Now, particularly things that you are, been looking at tonight, I think, was like the design. And I wanted to comment on, and ask some questions too, about the natural environment there already. Is, I think it was last week you might have examined it, about moving land, moving the, you know, the actual natural environment. You're gonna be moving some dirt from here over to this other section. Has that already been discussed? I, I remember one thing about back of some of the buildings, they were gonna build it up or in the front, so you can do such and such. Is that bringing in some loam land from someplace, not loam, land from fill, from somewhere else? Are they gonna be moving land around there? Uh, it just is a, a natural area. And obviously, although it was zoned to be industrial, it was because of the other industries that were down there. They've been lessened now, that was really a, there was a, a chemical plant across the street there at one time. A big, big, big one, some kind of national company that they had to close down. So there's all that contamination and that's on the other side of, of the river. There's a river, it's along the river itself. It's, um, and has, you know, all this ponds, I keep calling them, around the property. And they're practically, the buildings are practically on the property. We, we wouldn't hardly let them build if there was some other ponds or lakes in, in our town at this stage. You know, they're close to water. And then you've got all the, um, the, the safety issues about being close to water as well. So I'm gonna go back to, I do want to have the question answered about moving the land within that development there. They moving some high spots over to the low spots and this kind of thing? How much of that is there? How much is it being done just to have a certain back porch? Is it being done for the aesthetics of the road? Then, um, things like, how many buildings have basements? Are they actually trying to put basements on all these big multifamily homes as well? And, I mean, in, in a place like this, you would always want to question, you know, can they have basements and this water all around, behind them, beside them? You know, that would be of a big concern. As I say, that's like overburdening the land. How about now, I say the 20-foot road? So now we put a 20-foot road in. And now you've got, I guess they are gonna have to rebuild the bridge and get a road, a substantial road to go in there, because right now, you've got a driveway. And that bridge must be, I, I probably had some comments. I'm gonna have to go up there and look at all the comments from the departments, I haven't had time. But that's gonna be a major thing with this, this river. There is a river there and it goes, starts there, it starts way, 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 way back, if you look at the maps. And it continues and it's named the Rumpad River when it goes into Mansfield. So it is the Rumpad River, and it's before and it's after. But anyway, let's go past that. We've got this river to cross. That bridge, you know, I built a 10-unit commercial development. And if you ever had built commercial just as bad. But, you know, like just the construction vehicles, if you watch what went in around the post office, those construction vehicles are gonna destroy the, the bridge as it is. I mean, I don't know what kind of a bridge they're gonna build, but it's gotta be a pretty substantial one of it. It's gonna be a new bridge, I don't know, maybe it's gonna be metal, I guess it is. They're bringing up higher, is it actually gonna be in the air? And is it gonna be 20-foot wide? The kids walking out, or people walking out? Are they gonna be able to get by along the bridge when there's people walking and cars going both ways? It's 52 are gonna be built, but 54 are gonna be there in this little space, 12 feet between buildings. I mean, think of it. I know it's a wonderful thing to do in some places. Maybe we need a place for something like this. But this does not appear to be a place that it should be placed. It's just overburdened. Now, if you wanted to reduce it in some way, shape or form, that might be an acceptable thing and you probably could look at it a little bit differently. But this is, uh, should be looked at with different eyes. All right, so how many of these buildings are gonna have basements? I, I just heard about these three-bedroom ones.
All right, Joan? Joan, let me, let me, I'm really not sure where to begin, but let me see if I, if I can, basements. Are they proposed at all for the buildings?
All the buildings will have basements, except for the first duplex on the right, on the left, as you command.
Okay.
That's, that's the plan right now.
We heard that before tonight, didn't we?
Yeah.
Land doesn't support it?
Okay, you, you got that, did you hear Bill?
Yeah, he said all and except the first one.
Correct. The bridge, fire department has already required that that be reconstructed, or a new bridge.
That's correct, we've already hired a consultant.
Okay.
He's, he's in the process of doing the preliminary designs.
So the, the bridge that is there will, if this project goes forward, if we approve it, will not be there. One that meets appropriate standards, one that's acceptable to Mr. Shippey and whoever else has responsibility over it.
Fire Department.
You probably require a structural engineer too?
Yes, they will.
So there, there will be a new bridge. As far as moving earth around, I mean, I'm not a contractor, thank goodness, but I would think that you would have to move earth around in various locations to develop any kind of property, correct?
Yes, we talked that in, in depth at the last meeting when we were talking about groundwater, et cetera. So the site is going to be a fill site, material will be brought into the site. And yes, material is gonna be moved around on the site, but it will be important.
Any project?
I'm sorry?
It's no different than any project?
No different from any project.
Did you, I, I think those were the three questions you asked?
Yeah.
And then the bridge, 20 feet also? And, and the road coming in, is that, those are all 20 feet?
The bridge will be, the road coming in is 20. And if the board asks for a sidewalk, then it will be 20, probably 24, 25. And the bridge, the same thing, if the board asks for a sidewalk, the bridge will become wider.
And all those things you talked about last week, they are going under the river? Or like on the bottom of the bridge, do you bring them, are they gonna be like attached to the bridge?
I, I think what you're talking about there is the septic line and the water line that would go underneath. The, the intent is to go under the river, correct?
So at that meeting a month or so ago, my, my presentation was that we would drill. We would horizontally drill underneath the river. Subsequent to that, I met with the town DPW director and he hates that idea, because he says that invariably, when something leaks, it will leak underneath there. So what he would like us to do is to hang it on the bridge, which we'll do. Well, if he wants us to hang it on the bridge, we'll hang it on the bridge.
Okay. I guess that's also something we'll clarify next week. That, that's Chris?
Yes.
Okay. Joan, anything else?
Oh, how many three bedrooms are there?
Uh, the 10 duplex units are three bedrooms, so there's 10 three-bedroom units.
And the rest are two?
And the rest are two bedrooms.
Ten. Okay, I hadn't heard that. So I didn't realize we even had any three-bedroom units. I thought these were all small condos as well. Those are big when they have two bedrooms, but.
If I may interrupt, Joan, it's required, I believe Judy can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is required under statute that a certain percentage of units be three-bedroom, so as to not be discriminatory against families.
It's a state requirement, at least 10% of the units in a comprehensive permit development need to be three-bedroom units.
Thank you.
Joan, anything else? Because what I had suggested to Jeremy was we wanted just to go till about now.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Somebody in the back.
You have one more question?
Just very quickly, the three bedrooms?
Go ahead.
The three-bedroom units, they still only have two designated parking spots apiece?
That's correct.
Zero, but that's short too, but cool.
Yep.
I had a question about the units that are facing the street. He talked about having a walkout basement. So the walkout basement would be facing the street, is that correct?
Which, which street?
Moore Street.
The walkout basements on the duplex units would be towards Moore Street.
So it's gonna be raised seven feet? And then there'll be a walkout basement and then a two-story above that? Is that, am I seeing that correctly?
So it's a two-story unit on top of the basement? So I'm not sure what you were just describing, but you would see the basement and the two floors?
I think she's describing having the full foundation above ground to get to seven feet, am I right?
I, I, you know, I know that with a friendly 40B, you can stay with the character of the area.
No, but I'm just clarifying. No, but I'm just clarifying your question. You're talking about a full basement being seven feet above ground, above grade. That's, that's what you mean when you say that.
No, I'm saying that I think that the last meeting, they said they were going to bring in dirt to raise that front, um, area in front of the pond, seven feet to begin with. And then above that seven feet would be a walkout basement and then above that two stories.
No. So the, what it's going to be is, what we, what we're trying to, whenever you see a walkout, typically what we're trying to do is hit the existing grade. Um, so in this particular case, the grade behind those houses will be the grade that's there today and we'll be filling the front in order to pick the grade up in the front. So that's what I was trying to describe at the last meeting. The front of those houses will be about seven feet higher than the back, but the back of the house itself, excuse me, will be at the existing grade that's there now. So it won't be any fill near, it won't not be any fill, but there'd be very little fill near the edge of the pond. What we're trying to do is, there's also a flood elevation in that area there. We're trying to not fill on the flood plain as well.
Okay. Uh, thank you. And I just had one other question, actually two. As far as the school bus is concerned, just another point that, uh, to keep in mind, the late buses in the area usually stop at Point Royal, the Alden Street. So those kids right now are already walking down Moore Street to get to their homes because that's where typically it had been ending. So I just wanted to see if, if we're going to have the kids getting dropped off here at this, um, development and then at Point Royal, you're adding a lot of traffic. I know this isn't about traffic today, but you're adding a lot of traffic with these, with these 52 units. And I'm just, I'm concerned about those kids in between those two developments that are having to walk, um, as it is, a narrow street with no sidewalks.
What do you mean you're talking about kids walking from Point Royal down to this?
Mm-hmm.
That's a moral mark.
To this development or to the school?
No, to the, to, I'm saying, when my kids took the late bus, the late bus didn't go by the house. It stopped at Point Royal. You know, the late bus doesn't make stops quite as frequently. So I would go and pick them up. And when I'd pick them up, I would actually drive a little girl home who lived in one of the duplexes because otherwise she was always walking on Moore Street by herself. And I just wanted to make that point when you're looking at the schools and the buses, that the kids in between, if we're going to increase the traffic there, shouldn't be having an even harder time walking home from school.
Okay.
And the last one is just, originally when we met with the board of, the Board of Selectmen, they said there was going to be accessory apartments allowed. So just when we're talking about parking, I don't know where the accessory apartment would actually get built, but just keeping that in mind, that if we did do an accessory apartment onto one of these condos, you would have maybe another need for a car. Is there a maximum number of cars per unit? Or is there just max, there's just two parking spots?
All right. When, when, I, I, I think there was a comment last year when Mr. Caspar met with the Board of Selectmen and reviewed various waivers, there was some wording relative to accessory apartments. And I know there was some objection to that from the selectmen. Um, there won't be any accessory apartments permitted.
There's been no, no mention of all I've listened to of accessory apartments anywhere because I would be very interested in hearing about that. So it's not proposed, so it's not going to happen.
But it, could it happen in the future, I guess? Is it written out?
Well, anything can happen in the future. Um, but they would have to go, the accessory apartments, I think are under the planning board and they'd have to go through a whole thing.
But if we put a condition in that prohibits it?
That's right. We can do that too.
Just in, you know, when we're looking at the parking already, if you're going to add another apartment. Um, and is, is it two cars per unit that are allowed or is it just two parking spots? So I could have, if, if somebody's living there, they could have three or four cars. Is there a restriction on that?
I mean, I don't know how we can restrict an individual, how many cars an individual owns.
I, I do think the HOA documents.
The HOA could.
The HOA could, for sure.
Let me, let me just say, as far as a homeowners association document, um, in the two 40B projects that we've approved, that units were condominium units, um, town council did review and approve the homeowners association agreement. So certainly if we had issues that we would want to see covered in that, we would make that known to town council.
Chairman?
Some administrative issues that I want to make.
If I may clarify, our accessory apartment bylaw only allows accessory apartments of a single-family home. So I don't, there would not be something that could, I mean, I would suggest you still be specific in case it changes in the future, but our current bylaw would not contemplate it for this type of use.
Despite our efforts, otherwise. Uh, I want to hit some administrative issues because it is getting late. Um, and again, what I want to do in September when we start is to pick up on some of these issues. Um, Mr. Gallagher will be there and hopefully Deputy Chief Larry, Larissy will be there. So address those issues. Um, I understand Dylan, from your email today, that sometime before the September meeting, Mr. Buckley will respond to your comments on the site civil matter.
Yes, I believe, um, Mr. Buckley said in the email that I think they're aiming for September 12th for response letters.
Okay, correct?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. What we're trying to do is we're going to see if anything came out of this meeting that we needed to add and then file a revision, um, and a response. I've already had an informal meeting with the town's professional staff and Dylan to go over the comments. So we're ready. And Traffic Engineer is also, you know, based on our last meeting, he's done some additional work and he's getting ready now. He'll be contacting, uh, environmental partners to set up an informal with them. And we expect to have all of our modifications and responses done by that week, which will give a solid two weeks before our next meeting.
So we'll see. You know how I, about last minute, pound drop each. We will see it a, you know, a week before, is that what?
Two weeks. And so if we do it at 12.
Two weeks, so after two weeks.
Yeah, if we do it adjusted. Okay, that's fine. That's great. See what happens.
Okay, that's point number one. Point number two, um, we received an invoice from Environmental Partners in the amount of $10,376.25 for services that were rendered from June 27th to July 29. Um, so would I like to have a motion to approve payment of that amount? You working?
Yeah, I, I move approval of that amount. I'm not holding that thought. What is that amount?
$10,376.25.
$10,376.
Dollars and 25 cents. Kim, second it?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
And I might as well say aye as well.
What was that amount, Mr. Chairman, sir?
$10,376.25. Diane will send you a copy of the invoice. Actually, Diane will give you a copy of the invoice.
She's going to make a copy.
We need to add to the escrow account because we're, we're down below 5,000. So at our initial meeting, um, we approved an escrow account with additional amounts. So I think it would be appropriate to put another 10,000 in now. If you can get that within the next week or two.
I'll let my client know.
Yep.
Flip the couch over, shake it out. Flip the couch over, shake it out. Yeah.
Um, next item, if, if my arithmetic is correct, and it may not be, um, we're, we're supposed to close the public hearing within 180 days of the time that it starts or from the time we receive the, the application. Um, I think that is December 6th. I would like to get that extended to January 19th of 2023. That would be the, um, that would give us two other meetings after that December 6th date. It would give us a, whatever our December meeting date is as well as the January 19th date. Maybe we won't need it and maybe we'll need to go further. But what I'd like you to do, Bill, is to speak with Mike because this is his, something he has to consent to. And what I'll do is I'll prepare something.
Put something together or I'll?
I'll put something together. Um, I'll sign it. I'll leave it with Diana. And if you can get it, if, if you can sign it on behalf of Mike, great. If not, you know, Diana can just email it to you. Um, last item is, I've had two Zoom conferences over the course of the last several weeks, one with Judy and Paige and a second yesterday with Judy, Paige, Dylan, Molly Cates from Environmental Partners and Scott Turno from Environmental Partners was there as well for part of that. Um, we were discussing the issue relative to whether some soil, subsurface soil tests should be done at this point in time to determine whether in fact, or hopefully determine that there is no contamination of the property. And I was going to raise that as an issue for us to discuss tonight. And then at about five past five, I happened to see on my computer a letter from Attorney Kiefer, um, with respect to, actually, her letter was in response to Mr. Hoyt's letter of August 23rd. So I think under the circumstances, we probably should wait until the September meeting to give Mr. Hoyt an opportunity to look at, to give Attorney Kiefer an opportunity to, to speak with us. Um, inasmuch as Attorney Kiefer references several cases in her letter, give me an opportunity to research them and if need be to get town council involved. And Judy, I'll probably want to talk with you about them as well. I think some of them are housing appeals court, um, decisions. So I'd want to talk with you about them as well. So I think, um, come September 29th and hopefully we're not going to have anything else on the docket, um, we'll pick up again on the, um, the layout issues, um, and then start working on the environmental issues. Um, you know, there was an old.
Mr. Chair.
Television commercial about the Fram oil filters. You know, you pay me now or you pay me later. And our thought was, well, we could have a analysis done now or we can ultimately condition it if we approve it. But I think under the circumstances with Attorney Kiefer's letter, we need to step back and, and wait until September.
Absolutely, great.
Okay. Uh, anything, anybody on your side of the table has? Go ahead.
I, I think Judy was trying to make.
Okay, I'm sorry, Judy.
I just wanted to make the point that if the attorney's letter is citing Housing Appeals Committee cases, presumably all of those cases involved, uh, communities that were below the 10% statutory minimum under Chapter 40B. And so just not entirely sure how relevant those cases might be to this matter, but just wanted to make that point.
Well, thank you. As I said, I, you know, it was five past five when I saw this, so I didn't have any time to do any research of my own. Um, you know, she does reference a, at least one or two, um, appeals court cases. So I, I did email you a copy of this. You probably haven't seen it yet. Um, maybe I can talk with you for a few minutes sometime next week and we decide where to go from there. Thank you though.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing of my own.
So, um, a motion to continue the hearing until September 29th?
I will move that we continue this hearing until September 29th.
Uh, Kim, second it please?
I actually have a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, apologies. Um, so my couple of questions is just, just because I feel like we're at this point now where, where the clock is ticking down. So I just want to throw these questions out there. I am not necessarily interested in having the answers this evening just because time is going on. Uh, but someone earlier referenced lighting. So when and if we get to the lighting portion, um, something that I would be interested in seeing is that lighting that was not deleterious to wildlife. That's definitely something I would be interested in. Um, as I was looking at the very large handout that you've given us, on page two, I noticed that buildings A to J give us TF, BF, GF, so top of foundation, basement floor, garage floor, but we don't have those figures for buildings A to J, which are the duplexes. So if, if somehow that could be emailed out to us and then we could just, you know, handwrite them in, that would be, that would be great. Um, let me see, let me see, let me see. I do have some questions regarding, um, that I would like to have addressed for next month when we discuss the environmental issues. Um, is, is this the time to, to make sure those are out there or should we listen to the presentation next month and then ask the questions and then in October have the answers? If there are no answers, should be forthcoming in September. What would you prefer, Mr. Chair?
I mean, I'd prefer it in September, but we may not have time. So, so we'll see. If you could be ready by September, be great. If not, we'll just deal with it in October.
Okay. I mean, I have the questions.
You want her to clarify exactly what she's?
Yeah.
Kim, could you repeat it again?
Yeah. So I have some questions that I would like to ensure are answered with respect to the environmental issues and I'm not sure if they will be covered in the presentation in September.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um.
So I'm happy to, you know, just say them now quickly. There, I don't have a lot of them or I can certainly wait. If they're not addressed in September, I could ask them as soon as the presentation is complete at the September meeting.
What, why don't you?
No answers are available, then I can, we can wait for them until October.
Why don't you pose the questions now so at least they can start thinking of them?
Okay, great.
And if we can address them in September, great. If not, it'll be October. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the first one was, I know they're talking about Phase 1 ESA, the Environmental Site Assessment. Just curious how that is, is that the same or how does it differ from the MCP, which is the Massachusetts Contingency Plan? And let's see, if we're going to be having, as we found out tonight, that the plan would be to have wells utilizing groundwater for watering the vegetation for at least possibly the first year or two, then I think that raises the issue and the necessity of possibly having subsurface testing of the groundwater so that we understand exactly what's being sprayed out of the sprinklers for where dogs will be running, children will be playing and people will be enjoying the amenities, shall we say. Um, I would also like to have an understanding of which way the groundwater flows underneath the site. And let's see, if we have a very large rainstorm, I know that some of the basements, from what I understand, even though we're lacking some of the information, um, as I had requested before, um, about the heights, if there were to, is some of that groundwater potentially contaminated and could any of that contaminated groundwater enter the basements of any of the proposed residences? So I'd like to make sure we cover that. Um, also, my last one for environmental is, um, in looking quickly at the Phase 1 ESA, which is the Environmental Site Assessment, it appears that there was a visual inspection of the site. Um, is that typical? Oh, you know, I, I know they also looked like they had looked at some historical information, but is it typical that there's only a visual inspection of the site? I would have anticipated that there would have been a little bit more testing to be done within the site, possibly sampling in multiple occasions to see if there was any presence of oil, heavy metals, any potential carcinogenic substances in the soil and/or the groundwater. So those are my questions.
Mike, um, had, had mentioned to Paige and I when we had a early, early meeting that he would have somebody from Nago Consulting.
Correct.
Okay, so he'll, he'll be there on September 29th?
Yes, he will be here next September.
Okay, good. Good, thank you. So, want to make the motion again?
I move we continue this hearing until September 29th? September 29th.
Kim, second it please?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Dave?
Yes, aye.
Kim?
Aye.
And Barney, yes. So as the song goes from the happenings, see you in September.
That's a good one.
Thank you.
Need to adjourn. Barney, need to adjourn.
Oh, yeah. We're getting a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Kim?
Second, aye.
Okay, yeah. Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Uh, Lorraine?
Aye.
Barney, aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night.